Hallelujah! Kattan ala bhar, avakilvayin chukkutathu. Indha maalegallu, indha paththavanaal kuttathu ekattan kaasubathar veyaka. Naam intha edathre varunnaa padavara, vaan devane nukki paakkum. Veekuttathu ekattan avkaasubathar veydu, kattan indha kuttathu, maagimai padavindhu. Deva, naava thudavisigun veyaka, hallelujah! Hallelujah, anantriyappa! Antriyodam etthulikirum andavare, etthulikirum raachaave, etthulikirum andavare. Kathame, indha maale kuttathu, aviyana bharinoodhu, uleena idhurukkum avabha. Andavare, thuvakkamudan, andavare, idhivare, idhivare, thurukkaram, idhuvoodhu, uleelikkadum, nigalene, aasubadiyum. Andavare, ule aavishyakum, idhuthu, pain paduthukka bha. Indha naal, andavare, karthar, kandhan naal, idhuthu, magundukkadi thurukkalu, nee tham suthravada bha. Ude samkhuti, naava thirupoduthaam, kattan, idhurukkura, periyam, aguchidu, thurukkari. Santhosha, thirukthukkari, naavike, thirukthukkavadinale, umakka, nanthi, suthravaram. Mayaayi, kaakkum, leepa, nee pramodhu, unayirukthavadinale, ungalayi, paruyantakattan, naranthapodum, adakthavadi.
Kaakkum karankal, unne yathu. Kaathiduva, kiruvayaaale. Kaakkum karankal, unne yathu. Kaathiduva, kiruvayaaale. Alleluia, paadi, paadi. Alay kareena, naankeeduvi. Alleluia, paadi, paadi. Alay kareena, naankeeduvi. Nambuve, esuvaai. Nambuve, esuvaai. Nambuve, esuvaai. Nambuve, esuvaai. Vinthaleigal, orannam andhu. Bidiyin devan, naankeenari. Vinthaleigal, orannam andhu. Bidiyin devan, naankeenari. Veesa krudi, enthu paratha. Veesa rumathaan, chivitiduvi. Veesa krudi, enthu paratha. Veesa rumathaan, chivitiduvi. Nambuve, esuvaai. Nambuve, esuvaai. Nambuve, esuvaai. Nambuve, esuvaai. Manmalaygal, meyantum badiya. Kattan unney, kara pidita. Manmalaygal, meyantum badiya. Kattan unney, kara pidita. Kaathirundu, velananaayidu. Kaathirundu, odevu, geedamiduva. Kaathirundu, velananaayidu. Kaathirundu, odevu, geedamiduva. Nambuve, esuvaai. Nambuve, esuvaai. Nambuve, esuvaai. Nambuve, esuvaai. Aththi maram, thudividamal. Aatvandai, udalachalum. Aththi maram, thudividamal. Aatvandai, udalachalum. Kattirundu, kaathirundu. Venkappandu, povaduvi. Kattirundu, kaathirundu. Venkappandu, povaduvi. Nambeva, nambeva. Esuvaai, nambeva. Esuvaai, nambeva. Esuvaai, nambeva. Esuvaai. Kaakkum karankal, unne yathu. Kaathiduva, kiruvayaaale. Kaakkum karankal, unne yathu. Kaathiduva, kiruvayaaale.
Hallelujah! Ethne vedam, abhaviriges, oru bodhaname, kaivida maataari, kasthude. Hallelujah! Aththi maram, kubirvidamal, thonadu, aatthum, andhey, udalachchamal, kattarukkakathirukkodu. Oru bodhu, vedkamadukkodu, povadeelai. Hallelujah! Kattaray, namdiva, nirayaara, yundhalu, naavu, oru bodhu, vedkamadukkodu, povadeelai. Hallelujah! Kadmalay, neerukku, maniyaa. Kattarame, karampadi, peethukkara. Hallelujah! Hallelujah, indha maalegallu, anu, naladheemanay, aaradikku, veyaka, kadantavathurukkuro, oru manakattavakal. Veedhavadi, deemanay, naavella, oru manakattavakal, aaradipoma. Aviyana bharay, umakka, naaga, nanthi, suthravaram bha. Nigal, naadke, nee, thunegal, porattakal, bantaalu. Andavare, nee, deemanay, thaangukkavaramaai, nee, thithin, andavare. Umakka, nanthi, suthravaram, unni, arundu, abham, nee, neesavim, veedhuthravadinale. Hallelujah! Aviyana bharay, bha, umakka, aavakam, naaga, vaadukkadi, aavikal, thirundukkotta, naladheeman. Hallelujah! Umay, uyaththurukkum, porchukkurukkum, ubadukkurukkum, andavare. Nee, oruvaray, kattara, iruthravadinale. Andavare, nee, ellavina, andavare, idhay, thithin, baan, chedreellam, maridhruthra, deemanay. Bha, umay, uyaththurukkum, andavare. Hallelujah, nee, iruthaykalay, aarayinku, aarikravadeeman, thanthi, suthravaram, nanthi, suthravaram, nanthi, suthravaram. Vedam, suthravaram, bha, manushana, ogathai, paarpa. Namdivya, deeman, avyiruthaykalay, aarayinku, paarkaral, deemanay, irukkavadinale. Indha maalegallu, nee, iruthayithay, anna, naapadutha, naaduktiy, sahugathle, tharudhi, iruthayithay, kuthinaa, ethne vedam, suthravaram. Deavachanagalaay, kuda, naaduktiy, aadukkadiy, avarikko, thudukko, thudukkadiy, aay, kadantavathurukkuro. Hallelujah, anna, luku, maridhinchiy, irundhu. Devasahugathle, naadukkaathirukkumodhu. Deemanay, naan, aaradikku, odevu, deemanay, pravilakum, sayukkumodhu. Kattan, nichiyam, aagave, ennu, nee, vedhithalukka, bathisai, paarakshali. Tharudhi, iruthayithay, hallelujah, deemanay, kundbalaga. Tharudhi, iruthayithay, kuthinaa, ethne vedam, suthravaram, indha maalegallu. Deavachanagalaay, kuda, naaduktiy, sahugathle, bantukkare. Yaara, irundhaalukka, hallelujah, maadhiruthayithay, avarikko, neeray, thirukkumodhu. Unga, iruthayithay, kattarkinikka, thudukkumodhu, hallelujah, avaray. Unga, iruthaykalay, aachithey, chiaravane, kira, deemanay, aay, irukkara. Avar, oruvaray, ule, velakpadukkavaramaai. Avar, oruvaray, ule, aadhalpadukkavaramaai. Avar, oruvaray, ule, kinnapike, thudukkavaramaai. Avar, oruvaray, ule, daiyapadukkavara, irukkavadinale. Hallelujah! Hallelujah, aviyana bharay. Aviyana bharay, nee, iruthaykalay, aarayinku, ira, deemanalavo. Bha, nee, deemanay, karniruthayithi, vedhathurukkalay, kariyasa, ira, deemanalavo, raachaave. Andhre, anna, luku, maaduktiy, sahugathle, avathani, uddilamaai, oppukkodutha, biragai. Andhre, biragai, avadu, aadukkum, aadukkum, ethne vedam, suthravaram. Andhre, biragai, avadu, thukkam, thukkamai, irukkavukkalay, ethne vedam, suthravaram. Indha maalegallu, deavachanagalaay, oru, vedanikka, aadukkum, thukkam, kandhi, padukkum, thukkam. Naaduktiy, sahugathle, ule, iruthayithay, kuthu, gae, uga, iruthaythle, nee, kal, kuthu, odevu. Andhre, iruthay, uga, devasamaadhaalu. Andhre, devasamaadhaalu, deevan, devasamaadhaalu, iruthaykalay, ellam. Aadukkay, saithravadinale. Hallelujah! Hallelujah, umakka, nanthi, andavare. Bha, indha, blakathle, avadu, esikattaktharaykum, nee, oruvaray, raacha. Andavare, naampadaktharaykum, nee, raya. Daavitha, suthravukkumodhu, avare, nee, nee, naam, ekkaya, irukkara, kusali. Hallelujah, naan, naambugrada, avaray, varu, venusali. Indha maalegallu, nee, suthravaram, deavachanagalaay, suthravaram. Naan, naambugrada, nee, deemanathal, varu, venusali. Hallelujah, nee, ethne, oru, kaalikkalay, kaaga. Deemanathle, kaathirukkalam. Avemanathle, nee, kal, manthadi, thukkumodhu, irukkalam. Indha naal, avakuthathin, naal. Indha naal, avakuthathin, naal, aay, irukkavadinale. Hallelujah, avar, oruvaray. Ella, aachim, matthukkavukkara, deeman. Avar, oruvaray, ella, aachim, matthukkavukkara, deeman, aay, irukkavadinale. Bha, umay, naaga, uyaththurukkum. Nigal, thudu, thudu, thodu, umay, naaga, aaradikthurukkum. Udu, thudu, aaradippe. Udu, velanthood, ampukkuvive. Aaradhey, aaradhey. Suthrumay, thuday, neethu. Aaradhey, aaradhey. Aaradhey, aaradhey. Aaradhey, aaradhey. Idu, varayil, udavire. Yavinesare, yavinesare. Idu, varayil, udavire. Ayya, idu, varayil, udavire. Umay, thudu, thudanthood, aaradippe. Udu, velanthood, ampukkuvive. Aaradhey, aaradhey. Aaradhey, aaradhey. Aaradhey, aaradhey. Aaradhey, aaradhey. Enno, yenne, kandire. Ennoi, ennoi. Oruvaray, kandire. Deemanay, kandire. Yaara, thodukkum, thudukkumodhu. Neenai, kandire. Ennoi, ennoi. Ennai, kandire. Kandhi, ayam. Ayya, ennai, kandire. Kandhi, ayam. Umay, thudu, thudanthood, aaradippe. Udu, velanthood, ampukkuvive. Aaradhey, aaradhey. Aaradhey, aaradhey. Esadun. Aaradhey, aaradhey. Aaradhey, aaradhey. Ah, andavare. Yavinesha, nigal, bha. Idu, varaykum, andavare, thudavisigun, deevum, nee, raya. Enno, yu, neenai, bha, nee, kandharan, nee, andavare. Andavare, umathravati, muaththi, bha, nee, noorkittmankara, deemanalavo, raachaave. Andavare, yedho, varrafa, sugam, thodukkare, naan, naladheeman, umay, umakka, nanthi, suthravaram. Andavare, indha maalegallu, kattarigal, maththile, kadantavandhalik, raya. Andavare, yavinesha, aayinkal, thirukkum, thandikku, badiyaa. Andavare, enno, yu, aayinkal, kandharavara. Andavare, yedho, varrafa, aayinkal, sugam, thodukkavara, kuda. Andavare, nee, maththile, bantukkara, naladheemanay, naaga, maagimai, padukkukkum, maagimai, padukkukkum, maagimai, padukkukkum, daavay. Nee, vandhu, athathaykalay, sugam, thodukkara, deeman. Nee, vandhy, nee, deemanay, thandikka, deemanay, irukkavadinale, umakka, nanthi, suthravaram. Kathame, indha maalegallu, thudabha. Naaga, sabayaraay, andavare, oru, thudamam, aay, thudarachaave. Oru manakattavakal, umay, nookki, paarukkum, andavare. Nigal, deesaththi, nee, aasurvadikka bha. Saavavallam, thudu, deeman, nee, deesaththi, aasurvadikka. Andavare, bha, nee, blakhan, naadukkalay, kattan, nee, aasurvadikka bha. Ella, thudukkuttho, idhutha, bha, nee, chenukkalay, kattan, idhuthalay, aathukkadiyaa, naaga, shavikkum. Sugam, thodukkavara, nee, bha, varrafa. Andavare, esugaththi, peshukkum, indha maalegallu. Esuvaay, nee, sugaththi, naaga, peshukkum. Andavare, varikka, padukkukkara, velavina, padukkukkara, yaara, yundhalu. Andavare, nee, sugaththi, naaga, peshukkum. Akuthaththi, sayukkara, deeman, andavare, ellavukkak, maalegallu. Oru, akuthaththi, sugaththi, tharupadiyaa, laavak, shavikkum, andavare. Sumbagunnan, kriyappa. Sumbagunnan, kriyappa, andavare, sheshukkam, aay, kuda. Aviyana bharay, nee, andavare, nee, deesaththi, ellavu, deemanay, thandikka, padukkum. Varunada, akthi, aasurvadikka, padukkum. Andavare, nee, deesaththi, bha, andavare, vedheshakalay, ellavu, kaaga. Andavare, nee, naadavare, bha, andavare, thovare, neesavatal, andavare. Bha, ellavu, kaagalakal, shavikkum, thudel, thukkum, thudiyav, sayukkare. Vedheshakalay, ellavu, kappalakshakal, kaaga, neesusakal, kaaga, chikshukkal, kaaga, shavikkare. Ellavu, nee, maalegallu, nee, madhadaan, aasurvadikkum. Andavare, kattu, aasurvadam, oru, bha, nee, irukkavada. Adan, naan, um, vedikpadukkada. Andavare, naanathin, aviyana bharay, oru, oru, thudal, irukkukkum. Deesaththi, naranthavindi, aadukkum, vedhadiy, naranthathakka. Katturudhi, aarasurvay, aavikirthi, thangukkadiyaa, laavak, shavikkum, andavare. Kattar, herakam, sayukkay, nee, aasurvadikka. Andavare, sabay, thudukkukkalay, tham, esuvaay, naavathin, aasurvadikka, padukkavada. Andavare, kattar, aasurvadikka bha, thudukkakalay, nee, aasurvadikka bha. Udyakalay, deemanay, tham, nee, thandikka. Parukkina, naadukkalay, nee, thudukkakalay, malaviyaa, nee, thukkum, pain padukkum. Unga, naavathin, maagimai, kaag, deeman, nee, thudukkakalay, pain padukkum, kaag, thukkum, sodhrav, andavare. Umakka, nanthi, suthravaram. Oru, andavare, kattame, bha, andavare, kattame, aaradikke, kadantavandhalik. Yaara, irundhaalukka, indha, idakke, irundhaalukka. Andavare, thudiyam, aaththi, anuppi, andavare, nee, gunappadukkavara, halavu. Ummidiyam, aaththi, anuppi, daiyapadukkavara, deeman, andavare. Manas, thodukkum, poy, irukkum, ummidyakalay, thukkum, soorvay, nee, kibadaththi, thodukpira, andavare. Umakka, kattirukkavara, kattukkavara, naade, aarganen, vedum, suthravaram, andavadiyaa. Andavare, katturudhi, aviyana bharay, indha maalegallu. Katturudhi, velanthood, oru, vedan, irukkavadu. Andavare, khadukkum, thottavela, iruthu, thonigale. Andavare, naandha, bharay, thottavela, iruthu, thonigare, ayya. Indha maalegallu, thottavela, velanthood, oru, vedan, irukkavada. Esuvaay, velan, irukkavada, raachaave. Katturudhi, kanna, oruvaray, aasurvadikka, daava, raacha. Vaikunada, nee, kavidi, thudukkam, sayukkam, thukkam, thukkam, deeman. Abhriyaa, indha maalegallu. Andavare, oruvaray, andavare, madhadaan, aasurvadikkum. Oh, oru, nee, vedhithalay, kattan, nee, niravakshum, kaag, umakka, sodhrav, andavare. Ella, manthi, sanina, prakaravu, aasurvaditha, thodukkam. Madhadaan, aasurvaditha, thodukkam. Praveem, maaratthum, ayya, tharuthravam, maaratthum, ayya. Kattar, akutham, sayukkadiyaa, laavak, shavikkum. Oh, oruvaray, maamay, kuyavela, maadukkai, maajum. Unga, naavathin, maagimai, kaag, kattar, thukkum, pain padukkum, kaag, umakka, nanthi, suthravaram. Indha, aasurvadik, piraga, kaathimadu, piraga. Andavare, nee, chalavam, aay, esuvaay, thukkum. Plere, kattan, naavathin, shavikkum, nee, kandhalakalay, daave. Ame, ame. Hallelujah! Kattan, naan, oruvaray, aasurvadikka, bha.
Hallelujah! Deva, naladha, aagirukkara, aadukkum, mayimooda, athukkum, indha. Paththavanaal, thudukkukkum, andhre, kathre, yavayu, esuvaay, naavathin, aare. Vaalthi, varavetukkum, kattan, naal.
Hallelujah! The Lord is good for us today in this evening for the 10th day.
Neenai, oru, thudu, irukkare, andhre, vaipukkal, neenakal, aasurvadikka, padakal, thundhre, kaanayukkalay, naranthik.
The purpose of these meetings are to be for the people of God who receive the word and to be blessed.
Kristo vaadvin, menma, ingrath, thaanay, thunukkariyathay, nee, thukkum, oru, thudupes, vaamthikre.
I want to talk with you about the greatness in Christian life.
Neenai, oru, thudukkum, irukkavukkalay, nee, thukkavukkalay, tharavat, pariy, aasurvadikka, padukkum, vaalthi, nee, vedavapadukkida, thudukkum, oru, thudukkum, naan, peshukkum.
I'm going to talk with you from some scriptures about being with God and being for the Lord.
Neenai, oru, thudukkum, nee, jayadiparikal, thukthakam.
With me.
Ettam, madhika.
You can take the book of Judges, chapter 8.
Naan, mudal, 17, varakkum, thudukkada, vedavapadukkida.
8, chapter 8, from 4 to 17.
Andhre, naan, kaudhu, vasathil, thudhu, tharadhaav, vasana, varakkum, thudukkara, vedavapadukkida, le, thoda, padukkada.
You can see in Judges, chapter 8, verse 4 to 17.
Oru, pariy, thudukkutthu, thukkam, kandhadukkodu, gidiyona, kudutha, nee, peshukkum, padukkada.
Here, it talks about Gideon, who enters a huge battle.
Andhre, tharavu, 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 thukkada, thaanay, Zebba, Sauguna, illavu, nee, thudukkada, vedavapadukkina, thudukkum, peshukkum.
Not only about him, it talks about the opponents, Zebba and Sauguna.
Gidiyona, oru, thudukkada, iruthavukkalay, thunoruk, bha, nee, thulapadukkada.
The men with Gideon was 300.
Zebba, Sauguna, tharavu, oru, thudukkada, irundha, aadukkale, viddurundha, aadukkale, nee, thulapadukkada.
It was, these are men who were left out from the Zebba and Sauguna.
Jaya, thudukkam, madhika, 15, vasana, thudukkum, peshukkum.
Judges 8, verse 10 says.
Patthay, murugathakka, lakshthi, thuvun, aay, thuvu, thudukkum, aargal. Meedam, thudundha, 15,000, bha, nee, thudukkum, padukkada.
It is written, and their army with them were about 15,000. For 120,000 men who drew the sword at, at Phalims.
Oru, bhami, 1000, bha, thundha, oru, pariy, thudukkada, 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 gidiyona, thudukkum, padukkada.
Gideon takes 300 men against 15,000 men.
Oru, sinna, thudukkada, oru, pariy, aaravaththi, thudukkada, vedavapadukkadi.
This, this, this verse talks about a small army which defeats a huge army.
Andhre, nee, thukkum, naadukkum, peshukkum.
Let the Lord talk with us.
Andhre, naan, naranthu, vaaga.
Let the Lord guide us, kusali.
Indha maale, thudukkukkalay, andhre, thukkukkum, oru, thudukkada, deeman, peshukkuma, aage.
Let the Lord talk with each and everyone who.
Gidiyona, thudukkada, 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 thudukkada.
What type of army is the army of Gideon?
Andhre, thudukkum, thudukkum, soorukkum, thudukkum, oru, siru, thudukkada.
This is the army which is tired and weary.
Neenai, thukkum, oru, thudukkada, vaasukkara, thudhu, thudukkada, madhika, naan, kaudhu, vasana, thudukkum, peshukkum.
If you read chapter 8, verse 4.
Gidiyona, oru, aaravukkalay, thudukkada, 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 thunoruk, bha, thudukkum, thudukkada, thudukkum, thudukkada.
When Gideon has reached, came to Jordan, the 300 men were exhausted.
Oru, deevan, thudukkada, 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 oru, sinna, thudukkada, oru, pariy, thudukkada, vetchikka, thudukkada.
The army, which was in so many of needs, but still, it was the battle.
Neenai, deeman, thudukkada, aag, nee, thudukkada, 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 vedavapadukkada, thudukkada, umkada, oru, pariy, vetchikka, thudukkada.
As the children of God, you may, whatever situation, but the Lord is gonna guide you into a victorious battle.
Neenai, deemanay, naan, sarayay, aaridukkum, thudukkada, thudukkada, deeman, vaikkukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada, aasurvadukkada, thudukkada.
When firstly, if we understand our God, we can understand the greatness which he has for us.
Neenai, thudukkada, thudukkada.
How these people overcame.
Sarayay, nee, kavani, nee, thudukkada, 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 gidiyona.
Listen to me very carefully, the, Gideon, the one, was the leader of the army.
Patthay, thudukkada, 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 oru, thudukkada.
He is a commander of the army.
Neenai, thudukkada, thudukkada, vedavapadukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada, jayadiparikal, thudukkada, thudukkada, 12, vasana.
Listen to me in Judges, chapter 6, verse 12.
Andhre, thudukkum, peshukkada, thudhu, naa, bharaakramasariye, kattar, oru, thudukkada, irukkada.
The Lord said, you mighty man, the Lord is with you.
Deeman, thudukkum, peshukkada, thudukkada, bharaakramasariye, kattar, oru, thudukkada, irukkada.
It is written, you mighty man, the Lord is with you.
Deeman, thudukkada, 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 thudukkada.
Gideon was chosen by God.
Andhre, thudukkada, 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 thudukkada.
The Lord gives a promise that he is with you.
Oru, pariy, vetchikka, naan, thudukkada, thudukkada, kaadi, padukkada, kaariyakalay, deeman, thudukkada.
The base of each victory is that the Lord being with us.
Naagadukkalay, thudukkada, 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 thudukkada.
Not the things which we have, or not the situations they are, or not the people who are with us.
Neenai, deemanay, naan, sarayay, aaridukkum, thudukkada.
Today, when we listen carefully about our Lord.
Andhre, thudukkada, thudukkada, deemanay, sarayay, aaridukkum.
Let the Lord be glorified, carefully understand them.
Avar, thudukkada, 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 tham, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
You have to understand how he is and what is his characters.
Oru, sarayay, nee, thudukkada, 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 thudukkada.
I'm going to describe you with a short thing with you.
Oru, thudukkada, thudukkada, oru, aasurvyath, tham, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
In a school, the teacher asks the questions to his students.
Thudukkada, 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 avan, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
When he was taking the class, he asked this question.
Avar, thudukkada, 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 thudukkada.
He showed a picture of an elephant and asked, what is this?
Sarayay, thudukkada, thudukkada, nee, kavani, thudukkada, 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 thudukkada.
Quickly listen, the teacher shows an image of an elephant, picture of an elephant, and asks, what is this?
Andhre, thudukkada, 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 thudukkada.
The students were shouting that it is an elephant, an elephant, an elephant.
Ellavu, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
The students were excited to say that.
Avar, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
Only one student stood up and said.
Andhre, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
The student said, child said, this is not an elephant.
Avar, thudukkada, 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 thudukkada.
The teacher who took the class got stunned in a second.
Avaray, avay, thudukkada, 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 thudukkada.
He against-checked the image which he showed, whether he was right or wrong.
Andhre, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
See the image, he confirms that it is an elephant, and against asks the question to the student.
Andhre, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
But the student replied, this is not an elephant.
Apadu, thudukkada, thudukkada.
Then the teacher asked them, tell me, what is this?
Andhre, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
The student said, this is not an elephant, but an image of an elephant.
Sarayay, thudukkada, thudukkada, kavani, nee, deemanay, aaridukkum, baddu.
Listen to me very carefully, you have to understand the Lord.
Thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
When an image of an elephant cannot be an elephant, that is how the character of a Lord is.
Andhre, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
According to the particular student, an elephant is something which is stronger and mightier, and it is a living creature.
Oru, yassale, brahmanam, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
How, how, how good the artist should have drawn an elephant image, but still, it's an image.
Andhre, thudukkada, thudukkada, namdivya, deeman, thudukkada, thudukkada.
Let the Lord be glorified, the Lord is a living God.
Apadu, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
Our Lord is a Lord who talks with us, who guides us, and who accompanies us in every situation.
Neenai, thudukkada, thudukkada, bharaakramasariye, kattar, oru, thudukkada.
Here, the Lord talks to Gideon and says, mighty man, the Lord is with you.
Naan, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
When we understand the power of the resurrected God, we can get into that victory.
Neenai, jayadiparikal, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
Look with me, Judges 7, 6, verse 14.
Andhre, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
Here, the Lord says, I am sending you, you go.
Thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
When a man gets into victory, he will ask, when he is guided by the Lord properly.
Andhre, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
He has been sent by the Lord.
Deeman, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
When God sends a man to something, he never returns defeated.
Andhre, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
The Lord has sent so many men in the Bible, but none has returned defeated.
Thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
Why? Because when the Lord sends him, he talks something else also.
Oru, Mosai, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
When Mo, when Lord talks with Moses, he said, I'll send you to bring back my people of Israel from Egypt.
Andhre, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
The Lord said, I will be with you.
Thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
I am whom I am, he said.
Neenai, jayadiparikal, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
Listen to me for verses, chapter 6, verse 16 in Judges.
Andhre, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
The Lord says, I will be with you.
Deeman, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
The Lord promised that he will be with you.
Deeman, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
The Lord chose him, the Lord sent him, and the Lord was with him.
Oru, pariy, vetchikka, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
How did a victory came for this small army?
Neenai, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
These are the base for victory in whatever situation you undergo.
Deeman, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
These are the base to reach greatness as the children of God.
Neenai, gidiyona, thudukkada, thudukkada.
What did Gideon did here?
Andhre, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
The Lord interacts with him.
Andhre, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
The Lord gives a promise to him.
Andhre, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
The presence of the Lord was controlling him.
Neenai, 17, vasana, thudukkada.
Verse 18 says.
Andhre, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
The Lord, Gideon is saying, Lord, I will bring offering to you.
Naan, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
I'll bring offering and sell it before you.
Andhre, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
Judges 6, 24 says, he built an altar to worship the Lord.
Deeman, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
This is the life of being with the Lord.
Deeman, thudukkada, thudukkada, thudukkada.
When you are children of God, not only in offering, but you have to worship him. Judges six twenty three says. He says, peace be with you, do not fear, you shall not die, he said. It is a promise of peace towards him. As a leader, these are the things which he received from the Lord. As a leader, these are the things which he did to the Lord. Not only the covenant between Gideon and God. But the Lord said, you can choose a particular uh clan of people. We are aware of what Gideon did here. He chose three hundred men as God said. Not only in covenant between Gideon and Lord, but also for the people which he has chosen. How a leader which God expects has to be. It is written that he supplied the needs of his people. If you read Judges eight verse four. Here it is said, the he, uh the men with him, the three hundred men was exhausted. Here in the first verse, he goes and talks with the men of Sukkot. He is asking them that the people with me are with hunger and thirst. My people are with needs. They are sick. I have to supply their needs. A good leader goes to the presence of the Lord for the needs of the people. Here Gideon was knowing the need of his people. Why those men stood with him in all situation because. Because he loved the people. He had wishes to meet the needs of the people. You can read all the verses, kids. Verse eight says. He leaves here and goes to Penuel and asks the same to them. He goes and asks each and every man. Sir, can you help my people with something? Who, how it is talking about the greatness? How we can deliver a life of honor? You would have read about Mother Teresa. In Mother Teresa's life, they can see so many things. She helped for all the people who are in need. In particular thing, she was continuously making efforts. If you read her history. She goes to a bread seller for this, for a people. He asked the baker that the people are with hunger, so I need something to give them. But the baker just spits on her tongue. She left everything and came to help the people. When she asked something with her hand, but the baker just spit it on her hand. He spit it and said, take this and go. But she didn't care about anything. She just wiped the wipe in her dress. She said, let me take this for me. But give something for my children, she said. The baker continuously supplying bread for the people. A good leader will know the needs of his people. Gideon talks for his people. There were so many needs with Gideon. He has so many needs. But a leader goes and asks for his people. You can read the whole Bible about about Jesus. He was carrying for his people. When they were suffering and uh he also suffered with it. When they get into trouble, he also gets it done. He stands for his people. You see the life of Gideon, he stands for his people. Let the Lord be glorified, you have to know how the army got into victory. When the people of God exhibit the love of God. When the people of God do the things of the Lord. Not only that, you listen to me, the second thing, how did they win? Judges eight four says. Because of their needs. Because of uh of the needs. In the time of struggle. But they didn't change their vision. He says they will chase out Zebah and Zalmonah. Gideon said, this, these needs will not stop my vision. We will see so many people when they, when they, when they trouble comes and problem comes and needs come, they leave their vision. But Gideon was strong in his vision. Glory to the Lord, in this evening, whoever you may be, you listen to this word. You may not have opportunities. Oh, you you may struggle with some needs. To to make your vision fulfilled, you may have so many needs. That the Lord who has called you is faithful and he will help you. I would say like that. Wait even if it delays. Your vision will come true. The time rate will happen. Here how he wins. He will not change his vision because of the needs. You will read in chapter eight verse five. He confesses his vision. He exhibits and proclaims his vision. Not not many who are talking about the vision. They are not explaining or telling about. Why they are scared of each other? Why they refusing each other? Oh, and they they are looking like if the opportunities and the situation of how about we go some. Because tomorrow someone will question us. Someone will ask us, he said this, you learn. The people, those people are failing to conquer the vision. The man who proclaims his vision and the Lord is faithful to make it happen. You can read in chapter eight. Here it talks about a woman who was suffering for twelve years. How a miracle happened in a in a fraction of seconds. But the effort which she took was high. The time was more. It is written, when she came to know what Jesus. She starts talking with with her inside. She talks inside with this one cat. She says, I'm going this way. I'm gonna touch like this. Like this, I'm gonna receive. She uh plans a vision. She designs a plan. She acts according to the plan. The uh it is like proclaiming a vision. The vision is gonna breathe between us. Gideon says, I will chase Zebah and Zalmonah. People were telling him that they are not normal men. Oh, you are telling that your man, she is the king of Gideon. There may be people who will talk about against your vision. The very city men say like that. Many people rose, will say that. Can you do this thing? Can you make this vision happen? Can you do as this possible? There are so many people to hate us. The Bible says here, he proclaims his vision. Judges eight verse seven says. He says, according to his decision, he talks. He says, the Lord will deliver Zebah and Zalmonah my hands. He says, he will deliver in my hands. Let the Lord be glorified. He says, the Lord will give the victory. He believed and confesses that the Lord has promised me. If you read Judges eight verse eight. There no one to support him. There no one to support Gideon, supporting him. There are people and situation hindering his vision. But he didn't lose his faith. The Lord is faithful to do what he has promised. All situations, the Lord be glorified. The faith which you have of the Lord. Here no one came. He said, the Lord will deliver Zebah and Zalmonah my hands. He said, what he do after returning back? The verse nine says. There were like situation uh which was out of hands. But he did not forget the Lord, the peace of promise which he had. In Judges six twenty three, the Lord said. He said, do not fear, you shall not die. Peace be with you, he said. In Judges eight nine, he said the same thing. He is saying, I'll return with peace. I'll return back with peace. The Lord has given me a promise. That promise will fulfill in my life. The Lord did that for him. Judges six three says. It is the uh the medianists were disturbing the uh peace. The people of this strange soul. They destroyed all the yield of the earth. There will be so many people who are gonna disturb your yield of your crop. Don't worry about that. Six six in Judges says. They were greatly impoverished because. Whom did the Lord then give, Gideon such deliver? Those men who spoiled the yield of the people of God's crop. Who were troubling the children of God, the Lord gave them in the hands of Gideon. The Lord will do that to you. You may, you have, you may have come across people who have disturbed your things and blessings. The people who have damaged your yield of the crop and your victories. You may be living with the people who made you to shame. But the Lord will deliver them in your hands. You will go into greatness as the children of God. The Lord did that for Gideon. He will do that for you. The Lord will do that for us. The Lord be worshiped will do everything for us. Let the Lord be glorified. Gideon did not leave the vision. Gideon proclaimed his vision. He remembered the promise given. He was talking and proclaiming the promises. The Lord of peace gave peace to him. The Lord saved his life from the battles. The Lord will do that for us. We will overcome everything and be saved. We can come up all all of other situations. He will do that for the people of God. They have closed their eyes. Good Father, we praise you. In this happy evening, we thank you. Lord, for all the people who are listening, your word, your word today and for their families and for all the works which they do. Let the mighty hand rest in each and everyone. The Lord was promised is faithful. The Lord was living. Lord, a mighty name will be glorified. Lord, you are expressing yourself as a living God. It is, it is nothing, our Lord is not in a image. Oh Lord, you are a living God, you are real and you are red and fleshed with us. The saying, glorious God, come down today, let's speak in heaven. Lord, let all the enemy which is standing against your people, let they be destroyed. Lord, we speak heavenly blessing and health on your people. Give blessing, amen.